All right, it is 10:00 AM. And we are going to go ahead and call a meeting to order. This is the Tuesday, March 26th, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Dennison. Before we get started, it's our tradition that we follow here that we begin each one of our meetings with an invocation, Pledge of Allegiance. If you would care to join us, we'd ask that you would stand with us at this time. Father, we thank you again for another opportunity to come together to resolve the business for our community. We are blessed to live here, Lord, and we thank you for that, and we ask that you would be with us as we conduct this meeting. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the middle of liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, a little housekeeping before we get started today. The Planning Commission is a recommending body. And with the exception of site plans and plaits, which our decision is final on, all other decisions will be passed on to City Council for final approval. So zoning cases that we have on our agenda this morning, and they will be on the council's agenda for April...
First.
April the first, there you go. So if you get denied on April 1st, maybe it's a joke, maybe it's not, we'll just see. Anyway, we're going to give you the opportunity on the public hearings to come forward and to speak. I don't think we need to worry about imposing the three-minute limit today, ladies. And so that being said, we are going to move into item three, the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion? Are there any errors or omissions from the minutes from our last meeting? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Have a motion with a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right. Moving on, item four A, this your... Oh, yeah. Yeah. Commissioner Pickens will be removing himself from this case, conflict of interest, so for the record.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item four A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of lots 13 and 14, block 22 of the OTP Dennison addition, creating lot 13R, block 22 of the OTP Dennison addition, case number 2024-11RP. This is the subject area for the replat. This is 411 West Sears. And the property is zone multifamily one. The applicant is pursuing a replat to create one lot from the two existing lots. The property has been developed in a residential manner. Water and sewer are already available to the property and to the existing dwelling. The applicant is pursuing this replat so that they may construct an accessory building. Per the zoning ordinance, an accessory building cannot exist without a main dwelling. Given that these are two separate properties, technically, it would be the placement of which he wants to put the accessory building would be without a main dwelling. So this provides compliance for the applicant. Staff recommends approval of the request, and I'm present for any questions you may have.
All right, any questions to staff? All right, seeing none, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this request, either for or against? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I just need a motion for approval.
Motion to approve, excuse me.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
Have a second. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, all right. Item four B. Oh, yeah, Mr. Pickens can come back and join us again.
Item four B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to rezone approximately point 1148 of an acre tract legally described as lot eight, block one of the JP Dumas addition, commonly known as 301 East Shepherd Street, GCAD property ID number 146205, from the local retail district to the single-family SF5 residential district to allow for residential use. Case number 2024-010Z. This is the subject property located at South Crockett Avenue and East Shepherd. It's commonly known as 301 East Shepherd. It's currently zoned local retail, it's adjacent to what is known as the 2F2 family duplex zoning district. Let me go back. The applicant is pursuing the rezone to the SF5 zoning district in order to construct a home, or a single-family home that is relatively the same as what has already been developed in that block. I took a look at the properties, and there's one that has a one-car garage, but most of those dwellings have been constructed without a garage at all, or even covered parking for that matter, and they are all single-family homes. Oh, I'm sorry. This lot does meet the development standards of the SF5 zoning district for width, depth, and square footage. And the comprehensive plan designates this area to be developed in a neighborhood manner. A single-family or rezoning for a single-family use would be compliant with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of the request, and I'm present for any questions that you may have, and so is the applicant.
Any questions to staff?
I have a question.
Hang on one second, sir. Give me one second. All right, seeing none, is the applicant here? Come forward. When you come to the lectern, please give us your name and address for the record, please.
Aaron Johnson, my address is 1909 South Polaris Street.
Is that Dennison? Is that Dennison?
Yes, Dennison, Texas, sorry. The lot itself is only a 50 by 100. For local retail, that would be really small to build something on. And with the designated houses all in that area, they are all single-family, like staff has said and affirmed, and we moved to build it that way just because, to match the area, so.
Okay. Any questions to the speaker?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You need to open the public hearing, sir.
My name is Sammy Metcalf.
I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. All right, go ahead, name and address for the record, please.
All right. My name is Sammy Metcalf. I own 611 South Crockett Street. That's the bar that is closed. And I also own the empty lot directly across from 301 Shepherd. And my question was, how would that affect me is putting a house straight across? By opening the bar back up, if it's possible to open up, which was one of my questions. The empty lot over there would be a parking lot, and would that affect changing it to residential across the street from it?
So it just depends on what your zoning district is, and that's something that staff can help you with after this meeting, if you want to hang around. But your development standards, you're already adjacent to residential zoning, so whatever the development standards are, in order to operate the use that you would like to, are built into the ordinance, and we can kind of go over those after this meeting. But rezoning that property there, it may affect you with screening requirements, but your use will determine if you're allowed to have that bar there. Or your zoning district would require, or would establish if you can have that use there, I'm sorry.
So I got no say-so as far as objections to changing...
Which is...
That lot there, a 301, to residential.
Which of those properties is yours?
Uh, I can't tell by that.
Are you north or south of the property?
I'm directly west. The empty lot is directly west of the property he's referring to.
Okay, so...
And 611 South Crockett is the next property north.
Okay. That's something that staff can go over with you after this. Right now, the property directly to the west is split zone between commercial and multifamily, as shown on the screen. And then the property north of that is multifamily one, and the property south of that is commercial. So we may need to take a look and see if your use is even allowed there based on the zoning district for your property, not the zoning district that's pursued for this property.
All right, so then I'll just hang around after the meeting?
Please, yes, sir.
Any questions to the speaker? Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak on behalf of this request, either for or against? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move to recommend the approval of the change of the zoning, the subject property, local retail district, to single-family SF5 residential district to allow for residential use.
Have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a second. All in favor, aye.
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 Okay. Item four C.
Item four C, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to rezone a plus or minus 3,114.1 acre tract of land, more commonly known as being located at the northwest corner of State Highway 84 and FM 406, from the agricultural district to a planned development overlay district established as a freestanding planned development to allow for a mixed-use development, case number 2024-012PD. The last case I bring before you today is a request to rezone the subject property you see here. This property is located at the far northwest corner of Dennison, from the agricultural zoning district to a PD to allow for the development of Preston Harbor. Preston Harbor will be developed as a master planned community made up of variety of residential and non-residential uses, as well as open space. I'll touch on a few of those standards today. However, a full list of the development standards are listed within the Preston Harbor Plan Development Document, provided as backup information within your agenda. The two pictures you see here are, is the concept plan to the left and the conceptual trail plan to the right. If you can direct your attention to the concept plan, the areas that you see are dedicated for residential use. On the concept plan, these are the areas that will primarily be residential. There is some availability for that to expand, built into the PD, but it cannot expand over 15% of the acreage that is dedicated per this concept plan. The plan development has established development standards for each residential use, including lot width, depth, square footage, setbacks, et cetera. As I mentioned, all of those standards are listed within the PD document. The variety of uses are single-family, duplex, townhome, cottages, multifamily. Really, it's just going to be a variety of residential uses. While there are, there is no maximum number of dwelling units established by the concept plan or built into the plan development. At the build-out stage, the number of dwelling units cannot exceed 10,000 units. The concept plan also shows or illustrates areas dedicated to non-residential uses. These areas are primarily on the perimeter of the property with the availability for less intense residential uses to be built within the neighborhood areas. While the concept plan does not depict those neighborhood service types uses, those are uses that will have to be established at the time of plating. And depending on the location and the use of these non-residential uses, they will be developed per the office, local retail, and neighborhood service development standards that are listed within the City of Dennison Code of Ordinance, with a few deviations. Landscaping will comply with Section 28 dot 51 of the City of Dennison zoning ordinance, with some deviations related to natural areas. Preston Harbor has significant topography and lots of natural areas that the developer intends to preserve where they can. And so the plan development allows for those natural areas to make up for the percentage of landscape requirements. Offense and screening requirements will adhere to Section 28, yeah, Section 28 of the City of Dennison Code of Ordinance, as well as the SIGN, Chapter 19 of the SIGN ordinance. There are deviations built into the PD for both of those requirements. And those are listed in that PD document that you've been provided. The PD reflects the intent that Preston Harbor will be developed in a manner that offers walkability, connectivity, and multimodal options. Hike and bike trails and a golf cart path will be constructed in addition to typical vehicular infrastructure, providing residents and visitors multi-transit opportunities. And additionally, the property is intended to be planned and constructed in a manner that ensures adequate and open, adequate open and park space are provided. And those open spaces, I'm sorry, are also depicted on the concept plan. Staff has reviewed and provided, provided Preston Harbor Plan Development, and we've compared that against the development agreements that have been approved by City Council. And both the PD document, as well as those development agreements, mirror one another and do not contradict. For that reason, along with the development standards that are built into the plan development document you've been provided, staff does recommend approval of the request, and I'm present for any questions you may have, and so is the applicant.
Any questions of staff?
I have a couple of questions. Diane, just a couple of quick questions regarding the surrounding areas. Since we're looking at a rezone from A to PD, the surrounding areas to this parcel, are they currently ag as well, or are they all? I was just curious exactly how our current zoning surround is.
Preston, this particular property was annexed into the city in 2013. The surrounding properties that you see on this map that are not shaded, and I did overdraw the property boundaries for Preston Harbor a little bit, so including that property to the south that's not shaded, those are all located within the City of Dennison's ETJ. So they are not zoned, they are not a part of the city limits.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a feel for how this subsequent approval will affect the parcels around it.
Yes, ma'am.
So also, where would be the nearest sewer taps? Because obviously, this is going to impact the density of development for this area.
So that has been an ongoing project in which the development agreement states the city's responsibility to get infrastructure out there. We have certain deadlines that we have to meet, and we are on track to do so. We've had to work with neighboring property owners to acquire easements. Some of those have been secured, and we still are working on one, to my knowledge. So all of that had to be figured out before the applicant pursued and closed on that property. So we have hard deadlines, they have hard deadlines that they have to meet, and we are working closely with them to make sure that we are on track. So we have meetings regularly to ensure that that's taking place. That will also provide future use for those properties that are surrounding Preston Harbor, should they want to annex into the city at some point in time. We are in discussions with some of those property owners now about what that could look like for future development for them. But the capacity will be there. That was our ultimate goal, to service this property, as well as anything else that comes in along that 84 corridor. We had to make sure that we were upscaling and putting in infrastructure that could handle any future capacity. Thank you, appreciate that.
Any other questions, staff?
Yes, I notice only minimum lot requirements on single-family, it's 25 feet, and then 20, 20 feet for townhomes. Is that consistent with our requirements?
Did you say lot width?
Yes.
Okay. So for the single-family, which includes duplexes, the lot width is not consistent with what we require for a minimum lot width for a single-family. But I think the intent is to try and make it more of like a walkability, a walkable community, and to make sure that they are more of like the community where they can be closer to one another. Also, for your townhomes, the lot width, I don't have that in front of me, and I don't remember it off the top of my head, but I would, I would, it's pretty similar. I know our square footage for a townhome is 1,900 square feet. So that lot width and depth is probably not too far off.
So to answer your question as well, as long as the PD calls out that deviation, and I know you understand that, we've worked closely and going through it over and over again to make sure that we're comfortable and that the applicant is comfortable with. Some of them are zero lot lines, that's something that we haven't seen yet, right? So, but this is a totally new development of a certain size that you're going to see that kind of development here. So as long as it's called out, they have to follow it. And any amendments that they would like to make, we have to go through and work with them to make sure that either staff has been designated as the authority to approve some of those minor amendments, or if they are larger, they do have to come back through for, to PMZ and to council.
Any other questions? All right. Is the applicant here this morning?
Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, my name is Bob Roder. I'm an attorney with Abernathy, Roder, Boyd, and Hullett in McKinney, 1,700 Red Bud Suite 300, McKinney. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, who is the owner and developer of the property. And what I, if you'll give me a little bit of time here, what I'd like to do is put a little meat on this bone, because what you're seeing here is a pretty, doesn't have a lot of detail. So let me see if I can fill in some blanks, okay? This is probably the first type of development that you've seen before you. This is atypical almost anywhere in the metroplex to the south of you because of the size of the landmass. It's also very unique because of its location adjacent to Lake Texoma, which is really the critical aspect of why this is such an attractive development opportunity for my client. And I'd like to spend a little bit of time just describing the land, describing the plans for the land, and sort of the next steps that you would see as you sit there on the Planning Commission. Diane has already pointed out that this concept plan sets out primary land uses and the patterns for those land uses that we propose. Now, my client is not a lot developer, my client is not a home builder. On a tract this size, the way these things develop typically is that my client puts in the major infrastructure, the backbone of, that's required to develop the property, and then sells off portions of the property, we sometimes call those pods, to sub-developers that then would put in streets and interior things. And those persons might build their own houses, or they might sell those lots to home builders. In this particular case, because of the size and the topography of this property, we see a number of different types of residential development out there. And before I get to those types, let me, let me talk about the spine infrastructure we're putting in. You see two main roads on the concept plan. The first road is what we call the North Primary Street, and that comes off of 84 and goes to the northern tip of the property, which is designated as non-residential. We envision that being a resort-type area, could have a hotel up there, 120 to 200 rooms, could have some conference facilities, that kind of thing. But we see that as a, as a non-residential sort of hotel-type use. That northern road bisects the north half of the property, and so we sort of see the north half of the property developing in two different ways. Now, remember, all we have now is a vision. When we actually have buyers in tow, they're going to actually tell us exactly how it's going to develop. But between 84, State Highway 84, and that North Spine Road, pretty much just fairly flat upland land. And we sort of see that as an area for more traditional single-family development like you would see here around the City of Dennison. On the west side of that road, between the road and the lakeshore, we see that as being a less dense, larger lot, very, very expensive-type home development there. And so our vision is that the lots in that area would be a half an acre to five acres, something like that. And the home product you'll see there will be way in the six figures, I'm sure. But none of that development will occur without that spine road in place. And with that spine road goes water, and also there will be sanitary sewer that will be put in place up there. In the middle of the project are some inland lakes, have, some of which have been recently, that's within the last 10 years constructed, and some have been there for a long, long time. The northern part of this property, 50 years ago, 60 years ago, was mined for gravel. And so you find a lot of inundation up there, you find a lot of vegetation up there that's from a standpoint of an arborist relatively new, 50 years old, 60 years old. But it's a very interesting part of the property. But the lakes really are as valuable, in our opinion, as the shorefront on Lake Texoma. Those are big lakes, and they, you know, they just create a real focal point. Those lakes also happen to be the lowest spot on the property. And so the way the sanitary sewer is going to work is we'll have sanitary sewers from the northern development that will drain down towards the lake. And from the southern development, which I'll talk about in a minute, that'll also drain north to a point on the lake, or north of the lake, to a major lift station. And that's one of the city's infrastructure projects that they're putting on the property. And so that, that collective, that main lift station is the place in which all of this property will sewer, and then it'll be directed through sewer facilities, sewer lines, to the city's sewer treatment plant. So that's how we're solving to the more dense character of this property. There's then a major road that goes to the south. And this part of the property is more pasture land. It was not mined very much. This is an area where we see a higher density of residential. In fact, our, our dream is, and there's a lot of discussion going on, about having a major active adult community there. Now, active adult in this context, the homeownership is restricted to age 50 or older. And these types of communities typically have smaller lots, smaller residential dwellings. We see detached single-family, and what you and I would know as a duplex, they call it an attached project, a product. And so these are going to be on smaller lots. Most of it's going to be front-entry product if it develops that way. And these communities do not allow privacy fencing, so they're very open. You would have a fence, but it would just be a wrought iron fence or a tubular metal fence. And they're designed to have a centralized amenity center. And that amenity center would have things in it like pickleball courts, bocce ball courts, tennis courts, swimming pools, large inside areas for games and, and, you know, knitting or whatever you want, and, and, you know, space for the residents to go to. And, and, you know, space for the residents to go to. And the, and the, the way you get around primarily in those active adult communities is by walking or by golf cart. So this, these will be a, this southern area, as well as we project the northern area, will be very golf cart friendly and, and walkable environments. So the pot, or the, the plan to the south, we anticipate will be primarily your higher density, single-family areas. In those areas, that's why we have a, maybe a twenty-five foot wide, single-family lot rather than your typical fifty-foot wide, because they're going to, they're going to pull them in. The activities will not be in the yards of those homes, but the activities for those, those residents will be in the community centers and whatnot. The, the, just the sheer beauty of this property and the walkability that's going to be created will be, be a major attraction, we think, for that type of development to occur there. We have, in, in the center where the two roads intersect with State Highway eighty-four, we're showing that as a, as a non-residential area. And we, we expect that to be a mixed-use area, sort of like a town center. That will sort of be the activity hub for people that do not live in the active adult communities. And so we would expect to see some multifamily there. We would expect to see a lot of, we call them eateries and drinkeries. I'm seeing that along Main Street here. And we would expect to, to see some retail development there. We also have some locations along eighty-four and along four oh six where we anticipate that there will be some commercial development and some multifamily development. Critical, we think, to the success of this project, obviously, is not only the view of the lake, which we are going to be providing for the public and for everybody that lives there through our hike and bike trails and through the road system, pardon me, the road systems that are ultimately developed. But it is going to be a marina. And we plan to have, we're not a marina developer, but we are in conversations with those. And so we plan to have a marina in the location shown. And that marina will incorporate a public boat ramp and the facilities like that. I'm not sure I can give you the scale of what that would be. I've been on Lake Texoma since nineteen sixty-six. The scale ranges all the way from what you see out at Eisenhower Park to what you see at High Fork. But that's, you know, we're going to have public access that way. I think that, that's, I hope puts some meat on the bones. But I'll stop here and try to answer any questions that you have. And I do request your favorable recommendation to the council.
Any questions to the speaker? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on behalf of this request? Okay, sure.
Hi there, my name's Shawna Stone-Marker and I own the property at twenty thirty-one FM four oh six and we are the Southern Square. So I guess my concern would be the commercial area right next to my home. That is, that property line is my driveway. And when I look out my kitchen window, that's what I see. So that's, that's my concern and the high density residential right behind it.
Okay, any questions to the speaker? Thank you. All right, anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Jack Wilent Stevens, three six zero Teos Drive. But my property, I own the property west of Shawna. Okay? And my concern is the water issue, will there be storm drains in, in the development to keep water from coming down that hill? Because it's a hill and if it gets to the bottom, it will flood and I will become a flood zone.
I can pretty well assure you, under today's standards, that that will be addressed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I, I can promise you that will be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
It's a new world as far as development in our, yeah. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I will say, this is a, this is a new concept for us. This is not a new concept as far as growth in our, in our country. Density has become a huge issue because as we've grown, we obviously have to make the best use of the property available. So smaller lot sizes and those kind of things, the walk, the walkability of this project. Some of you have may have visited Seaside in Florida, which was one of the first developments of, of this nature. And it's highly successful, I might add. So we're excited about this development. The design standards have been put in place with, with the developer and the city. So I, I feel confident that those of you who are living adjacent to will not be disappointed in the quality of what we're going to see. And I think the city is, is involved in making sure that, that the quality is there. We're not going to, not going to have to worry about that. So that being said, I will, if there's no other discussion, I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the subject property being rezoned to a planned development overlay district, established as a freestanding planned development to allow for a mixed-use development.
Have a motion with a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right, we will move on now to item five, staff developments. No, staff updates, I'm sorry.
I wanted to let you know that we are applying for some grants that will help, hopefully help our zoning ordinance rewrite. We submitted last week for the Texas General Land Office Resilient Communities Grant. That will be for a zoning rewrite, building code rewrite, an update to make sure that we have all the standards that we need for resiliency included in the building code and best practices for that. As well as we will be looking at redoing our comprehensive plan as well. I think I inferred that during our last meeting, but hopefully we will receive that grant. We are requesting two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I was allocated a hundred thousand, so from the estimates that I have from some of the companies, when I have to do my budget requests, I have to provide that as well. That will cover all of those areas. We hope to hear back by, I'm going to say June, July, and the RFPs will go out in August. So that's our timeline that we're hoping to look at. We'll have to put a committee together for all of those projects, so just wanted to keep you in the loop on that. We are also applying for the U.S. Department of Transportation Safe Streets for All Grant in coordination with the Public Works Department. We are looking at developing an action plan for the entire city, which looks at walkability, connectivity, and making sure that we have safe routes to school as well. So we will be submitting that next week. And that is for a significant amount of money for the planning and then we'll come back for the second phase of implementation if awarded and after executing and developing that plan.
Okay. Seeing no other business before the commission, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Of course not. So we stand adjourned at ten thirty-seven AM. Thank you guys for coming.